I'd like to call the City of Apache Junction Council Meeting of March nineteenth, two thousand twenty-four, to order and ask everyone to put their cellphones on silence. The invocation will be led by Councilmember Peter Heck and the pledge by Councilmember Brian Schroeder.
I think that's you, Brian.
Me.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for the privilege of being able to gather together this evening to discuss city business. We ask that you give the staff and council wisdom and clarity in their decision-making. We ask you to watch over the men and women who serve in our military the world over. Keep them safe in these turbulent times. We ask also for your blessing on our first responders, including our police and fire departments along with our EMS personnel. Please keep these brave men and women safe in their duties to protect and care for the residents of this city. Thank you for the honor and privilege we have to serve the residents of this great city. These things we ask in your name. Amen.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mayor Wilson?
I think I'm here.
Vice Mayor Schroeder?
I am here.
Councilmember Cross?
Here.
Councilmember Heck?
Here.
Councilmember Johnson?
Here.
Uh, Councilmember Soller?
Here.
You have a quorum?
Excuse me. As a reminder, all items on the consent agenda will be approved with one motion. If a council member wishes to remove an item for further discussion, requests must be made prior to approving the consent agenda and be moved to new business. Do I have a motion for a consent agenda?
Mayor?
Yes.
I move the consent agenda to be accepted and approved as presented.
Roll, roll call.
Councilmember Soller?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schroeder?
Yes.
Councilmember Cross?
Yes.
Councilmember Heck?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, I got a couple of words and proclamations here. We'll start out with the first one, International Dark Sky Week. Excuse me. Whereas the beauty and wonder of the natural night sky is shared heritage of all humankind, an experience of a standard beneath, standing beneath a starry night sky inspires feelings and wonder and awe, encourage a growing interest in science and nature. Whereas the Sonoran Desert is home to dozens of species that rely on undisturbed night environments to thrive. And whereas eighty percent of the world's population lives under a dome light pollution and may never experience the visual wonder of living under a dark sky. And whereas light pollution has been significantly improved to have economic and environmental consequences which result in a significant negative impacts and contributes to diminished energy security. And whereas Dark Skies International is a global recognized authority on light pollution and has created International Dark Sky Week to raise awareness of light pollution and provide free education, resources, and solutions to the public to encourage and protect, protection of and enjoyment of the dark skies. I now therefore, Jim Wilson, by virtue of authority vested in me as mayor of the City of Apache Junction, do hereby proclaim April second through the eighth, two thousand twenty-four, as International Dark Sky Week. And Kelsey and Addison?
Get a picture. Hold on and get a picture.
Good evening, Mayor and fellow city council members. As a quick introduction, my name is Addison Kaufman and I have been a planning intern since August. Over the past few months, I've had the opportunity to work with Kelsey and learn about the City of Apache Junction's dark sky initiatives here at City Hall and throughout the city. Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and fellow city council members for designating the week of April second through the eighth as International Dark Sky Week. This is our second year formally recognizing International Dark Sky Week and we plan to continue this recognition each year moving forward. Kelsey provided a more in-depth update on the city's Urban Night Sky Place application on January sixteenth. However, I wanted to give a brief update for everyone in the audience. As you know, staff has been working on designating the City Hall campus as an urban night sky place. We are getting close to finalizing the contract with Trane Technologies to purchase and install the new lighting and we hope to get phase one completed within the next few months. We are also continuing to work with Liz in the Park and Recreation Department on new dark sky themed programming. Now that the fitness deck is complete at the Multi Gen Center, we hope to use this new feature for future stargazing events. We are also looking into possible collaborations with Pinell County to further our dark sky efforts. Thank you again for continuing to support the city's dark sky efforts. We are excited to see our efforts come to fruition and we will continue to keep you updated as we move further along in the application process. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, proclamation, Vietnam War Veterans Day, March twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-four. Whereas today we honor those who bravely served in the Vietnam War and who sacrificed as did their families on behalf of our nation. And whereas, oh, fifty-one years ago, on March twenty-ninth, two thousand, excuse me, not two thousand, nineteen seventy-three, the last of two thousand five hundred American troops were withdrawn from South Vietnam, entering the military involvement in what is now the longest war in our country's history. And whereas more than six hundred men, women, from the great state of Arizona made their ultimate sacrifice in defense of our country during the war. And whereas in a spirit of pride and gratitude, it's time to honor the heroic accomplishments of the fifty-eight thousand service members and women whose names are listed on the Vietnam Memorial Wall. And whereas it's important that those who have served are honored and recognized to ensure that their great sacrifices and measurable contributions to our nation are never forgotten. I now therefore, Jim Wilson, by virtue of authority vested in me as mayor of the City of Apache Junction, do hereby proclaim March twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-four, as Vietnam War Veterans Day. And Jennifer, you want to read the names of the group?
Certainly, Your Honor. Tonight, we have two BFW posts represented. Um, we have post ninety-three ninety-nine and post seventy-nine sixty-eight. Commander Jim Johnson at post ninety-three ninety-nine, Leonard Loomis and Paul Cozeno from, uh, post ninety-three ninety-nine. And representing seventy-nine sixty-eight is Teddy Julian, Don Wood, and Frank White, if they would come down to receive the proclamation.
Thank you for your service, guys.
Mister Mayor, members of the council and staff, on behalf of all of us standing here, all the Vietnam veterans worldwide, we want to thank you for this honor. If I may speak for all of them and all the veterans that aren't here, there's a lot of things that we did that we're not proud of. But there is one thing that the vast majority of veterans, if not all of them, are proud of and that's the units we served with while we were in combat. So I've asked all the, the gents up here if they'd be willing to go ahead and introduce themselves and tell you which unit they served with while they were in Vietnam.
Jim, go ahead. What unit did you serve with?
My first tour I was with the four oh third Special Operations Detachment, fifth Special Forces Group. Second tour I was with the four oh eight Special Operations Detachment, hundred ninety-six Infantry Brigade, twenty-ninth Infantry Division. I was crazy enough to go back a second time.
Thank you for your service, brother. He is my brother. We all served over there. We were very young. My draft notice was coming up. I didn't know whether to join or not join. I knew it was coming, so off I went to the service. I joined the United States Navy. I served aboard a destroyer escort in the South Pacific. Off I went to Vietnam. Like Jim, I went twice. I was there early on, nineteen seventy-two and nineteen seventy-three. I went back for the evacuation of Saigon in nineteen seventy-five. The horrors will never leave me. I live them on a constant basis. It's hard sometimes. Those are things that you never forget. My dad was a World War Two veteran who landed at Okinawa. Thank God he was there for me when I came home. It helped me a lot. And there's a lot of veterans that, uh, they live those nightmares every day. I pray to God that our youth never has to go through that again. I really do. But I'm also proud of the service that I gave to our country. And I'll never forget the ability and the fact that I was able to do that. I'm not sure, had it not been for my draft, that I'd have, that I'd have gone. But I'm really proud that I did. Thank you very much, council. I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Paul Cozeno. I'm the third of five generations to serve in the military, United States Army specifically. I served the second troop, seventeenth air cab, hundred first airborne division, and one fifty-eighth Assault Helicopter Battalion, again, hundred first airborne division. I was one of those crazy guys in the helicopters. And the story is true. You hear a helicopter, you always know where it's at and you always go looking for it. I'm very proud of my service. I spent twenty years in service, tried a little everything and my welcome home wasn't all that great, but the welcome home era is wonderful. I thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is, uh, Don Wood. I go back quite a few years. My family served with Washington Valley Forge. I was drafted in nineteen sixty-five. I enlisted in the U.S. Army, trained as an army engineer. And I reported to, uh, MACV in Saigon. And I was assigned to, uh, forty-fourth Signal Battalion as a wrecker, five-ton wrecker operator and ran convoy from Benoit to Swanlock and all through, all through the three core area. And, uh, I just wanted to say that, uh, my whole family has served my country since seventeen hundreds. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm gonna add a little bit for myself and the aspect on it. Though I was only on the ground in Vietnam one time for a very short period of time, but, uh, it was one of those things that, uh, I was in the Air Force and we had flown in with, uh, a group of Seabees to exchange them and bring out a group of Seabees that were leaving. And, uh, we had our plane, I'll say peppered with a lot of shot. And, uh, the pilot and the copilot complained because they had to manually fly the airplane all the way back to, uh, the Philippines. And, uh, we landed safely, but it is one of those things that you got to see what happened over there and, uh, being stationed in the Philippines. We sent over a lot of people that were walking as they were going over. The unfortunate thing is, we got to see a lot of them come back in boxes. So, um, we did lose a lot. Okay. I want to thank everyone for their service. Excuse me. Uh, regional intergovernment updates from the council. Yes, yes.
I'd like to take this opportunity to report on the Lost Dutchman Days event that took place the last weekend in February. This event is a partnership between the AJ Mounted Rangers and the Superstition Mountain Promotional Corporation. As the captain of the AJ Mounted Rangers, I had the opportunity to observe the event behind the scenes. It was an extraordinary effort by so many volunteers from the many charitable organizations who made this event possible. I am pleased to report that this year's Lost Dutchman Days event was the most successful event ever. The event raised two hundred and forty-five thousand dollars, almost a quarter of a million dollars. This money was distributed to the many charitable organizations who serve the children and youth of Apache Junction. I want to thank the sponsors, vendors, and the thousands of folks who came out to enjoy the many activities during the event. But I want to sincerely thank the hundreds of volunteers who gave countless hours to make this event successful. I also want to thank Liz, Riley, Dave, and the members of the Parks and Rec team along with the staff from Public Works Department for their hard work. They were a tremendous support to the event. In addition, I want to thank the AJ Police Department and the Superstition, uh, Fire Medical District, Superstition Mountain Fire Medical District for their presence. The police presence was an essential part of creating a safe and enjoyable event for the public. Please know that the money raised at this event goes to support the organizations who serve the children and youth of this city. Thanks again to all.
Hey, what else? Mayor?
Yes.
Today, excuse me, today, myself, the mayor, and Councilmember Cross went down to Phoenix Mesa Gateway Airport for the groundbreaking of the new NAU workforce, uh, building. This is kind of exciting. They're gonna be teaching, uh, students on how basically, uh, run, run hotels, run restaurants, run bars, uh, for the, there's a real shortage in hospitality workers for those areas and cooks and chefs. And it was really exciting to see this come so close to our border. And this will help us get some highly trained people and hopefully we can get some, some more help for the restaurants and bars here. I, everybody's struggling for manpower to stay open and get things done in a timely manner. So this is really exciting that they're gonna be opening this up so close to our border. So we went down for that grand opening.
Okay, no one else? All right, and the spin-off on that for myself is that, uh, you know, we're going to, uh, be able to have, uh, you know, a, they're looking to have this completed and actually in operation by this, uh, fall, where they're, uh, gonna be able to do, uh, the training. And they're also gonna have a restaurant down there where they're all gonna be, uh, actually doing the preparation for everything. So they get to learn and, uh, um, their training and put it into full operation. Uh, also at the, uh, Phoenix Mesa Gateway Airport, uh, meeting, um, it was announced that Gulfstream is very well moving forward to opening up its new, uh, maintenance facilities of a little over, uh, two thousand five hundred square foot. And, uh, that will be able to employ a little over two hundred and fifty, uh, people. They also have started another facilities, uh, on the, uh, east side. That's over, uh, two thousand five hundred square foot. And, uh, it'd be completed next year and they're looking to be having the hiring of well over a thousand people at that facilities as well. Uh, there's also, uh, facilities of two thousand seven hundred, excuse me, two thousand seven twenty-five thousand square foot. Say that quick and fast. That will be over, uh, this, uh, for a climate, uh, systems, uh, that will be. And again, this is gonna be another over two thousand jobs that be completed this fall. I also attended the Pinell County Fair and saw our local, uh, four H, uh, young adults as they showed their animals and later sold their animals and they did very well. Also saw one of our young adults showing his handiwork on welding. And of course, I got the bid on a couple of them. I got to purchase a couple of his items. Uh, look forward to next year when they're continuing it on and as they grow. A, uh, couple of activities that are gonna be happening this, uh, this weekend, uh, in the valley. There's Luke Air Force Base, Go Air Force. The, uh, Thunderbirds will be, uh, putting on a huge aerial display. It's a very interesting, very impressive, uh, show. And also in the northern part of the valley is, uh, Arizona Game and Fish Expo at Ben Avery. And, uh, so if you've got nothing to do, definitely go and visit what's going on in our valley. Okay, managers' report. Bryant?
Thank you. Thank you, Your Honor, Bryant Powell, City Manager. Tonight, um, I'd like to report some great numbers coming out of the marathon. Um, the total participants on the entries have gone up over eleven percent. And, uh, we're really, really grateful to have that, um, great program, that great marathon here, uh, for the number of years we have. Uh, also, uh, it was a real honor to have with us heroes here tonight to be able to allow for us to do the things we do tonight, to have a civil governance, to be able to, um, debate, to be able to go through the things that we get to do were because of these, uh, great men and women who came in tonight. So from a staff perspective, I could tell in our eyes, we're grateful for them. I have tonight two, uh, folks who are, um, gonna be providing presentations to us. We'd like to first invite up Tony Smith, who is the Executive Director of Pinell Partnership for an update. Uh, Tony won't say this, but he was the second mayor of the City of Maricopa and has served also our great county as a county supervisor. Tony?
Thank you very much. Uh, Mayor Wilson, council members, it's a pleasure to be before you again. Uh, I enjoy getting before you and other council members, uh, throughout the county just to give a brief update of what Pinell Partnership has been doing on your behalf. And thank you for your support and your participation. I think this goes...
Just click it or use the...
Ah, okay.
There we go.
There we go with that one. Well, for those who do not know what Pinell Partnership is, we're a five oh one C six nonprofit membership organization. The C six means that we can do, uh, and we do some limited lobbying. For example, if it's within or attached to our mission statement, which is all about economic development, we do some limited amount of lobbying as long as we don't make that our primary purpose. For example, during this legislative session, we've had some particular bills that, uh, in regards to water resources and water management, that our Water Resources Committee asked us to support and, and sign on to. And, uh, so we do that type of lobbying. From time to time, cities, communities like yours need some type of organization to show, uh, broad support if you're going after a federal grant or another, uh, letter of support. We do that and we, uh, as members, we, we support our members on those ways. So those are examples of what the C six does for us. We have twenty-four board of directors made up of business... We have 24 Board of Directors made up of business and community leaders. And I believe Mayor Wilson, you're one of those, and we're happy to have you on our board. Well, we're an organization that's over 200 members and growing. These are just a short list of many of the corporations and institutions and utilities that are around Pinell County or invested in Pinell County. And they do a great job. We have two employees, myself, the president, and the executive director, Rena Ream. Everybody else is a volunteer. Our Board of Directors are volunteers. Our chairs and co-chairs of our committees, our board liaisons to those committees are all volunteers. We seek the best and the best is oftentimes provided for us. We have a mission statement, and that's, as I mentioned, all about economic development. But how do we accomplish that mission? We do that with monthly breakfast events. We bring those breakfast events around the county, Casa Grande, Maricopa, Florence. One of our favorite venues is your Multi-Gen Center. And Apache Junction graciously has us at that facility from time to time. But those breakfasts are there to inform, allow networking opportunities, and sometimes we do a little entertaining, too. The committees that we have inform and develop actions and problem solve. And we're very happy with the participation. Post-COVID, it was, we had to regrow the organization. Many of our committees were stagnant, not even meeting. And so we took about two years to rebuild them and we're very happy with the direction. I'll go over a little bit of the committee work and what our committees are focused on here in a moment. And then finally, we do specific projects in order to advance the economic opportunities. And I'll have a sheet that talks about that one, too. But these are our monthly breakfast events. This is just to give you an example, some of the recent topics we've had. We appreciate Mayor Wilson, when he comes onto our panels, and not only just as a combination of various mayors, but in regards to the Mesa Gateway Airport, sir, you did an excellent job on the panel for that. Water management is always a big, big issue for Pinell County. And we talk quite a bit trying to manage. And I think Pinell County does one of the better jobs in Arizona as far as counties in managing our water resources. One of our most popular breakfast events, we normally hold at Wild Horse Pass because we get a lot of people at that one. Elliot Pollak, market forecast for the next year. Danny Court's doing it now, but he does an excellent job and it's a well-attended and entertaining event. Transportation is always, whether it's surface transportation or it's air transportation, we, rail transportation, we cover it all. And Pinell County and our communities are blessed with some of the great airport and other facilities and rail-served areas in the state. Pinell County in the news, we always try to get the most interesting and the hottest topic that we bring before our membership. And this is how we do our breakfasts. I mentioned our committees and the great work that they do, economic development. We very happy that Pat and some of your other economic development professionals help support that committee. We take that committee around the county. And for example, Florence, we would work with our Economic Development Director in order to highlight what's happening in Florence. Same thing with A.J., anywhere around. Or sometimes we're talking about what can we do in order to enhance economic development within the county. Government relations is, they meet year-round, but of course, this time of year, they're the most busy. And they do a lot of good work as far as trying to find the bills that are before the legislature that sometimes are good for our communities and sometimes they're not so good. And so we try to highlight those and share that information across the government liaisons and intergoves in order to share what are you doing with this one and what are you doing with that one. Transportation and infrastructure, as I mentioned, they are looking at all types of transportation in Pinell County. When it comes to the Prop 469, which was about two years ago when we brought that plan, the transportation and infrastructure did a lot of work as far as in the background just to help educate and share the information, what each one of the committees, our communities are doing. Business and education is looking at workforce retention and development, working oftentimes with Central Arizona College and the Workforce Improvement Boards. Doing, as we know and was mentioned in just this evening, workforce and being able to have a highly qualified workforce for these jobs that you are bringing to the community is very, very important. Water resources, we're trying to manage the abundant natural resource we have, but there's a huge demand. And as we continue transitioning from mainly an agriculture-based economy into one which is with the development, there's certain techniques and ways in which we can reuse, recycle, and better manage our water resources. Health and Human Services, they're mainly focused on affordable housing and being able to find out what each of the communities and the county is doing regarding housing. Open space and trails, you have a great area here and it's a very popular area. And so the Open Space and Trails Committee looks at ways in which we can interconnect the trail system from like Apache Junction into Queen Creek and other areas, or just to be able to provide for that great asset that we have in open space. When we realize that economic development passes many forums, economic development, when we competing with Colorado, Utah, California, many of these states do a lot of outdoor activities. And so if we can continue to provide high-quality outdoor recreation opportunities, that helps us in our competition in landing those type of companies and people. With so much activity happening in solar, we have now a renewable energy committee. That committee is looking at all forms of renewable energy, not, or including solar and many others. The other thing, last thing we did, breakfast committees, and now these are some of the projects. As I mentioned, we, Pinell Partnership was all over the Pinell RTA and transportation ballot election, doing all we could to help it pass. Unfortunately, it missed by a few votes, but we're standing ready in order to help in the next opportunity. We partnered with Pinell County to help create the interactive map viewers. When I was county supervisor, I realized, why can't we have a tool that just with my smartphone, I can call up a certain geographic area and I can add and subtract layers from that depending on what I wanted to look. If I wanted to look the rail facilities, I could put a layer on rail. I could look at the surface transportation. I could look at the AMAs, et cetera. I could look at the hospitals. And now, about a year ago, it was launched. Pinell County, working with us, was able to launch their interactive map viewer. It's a powerful tool. It's great for site selectors, for economic development professionals, and council members in, such as you, who want to take a look at what assets you have in Apache Junction or any of the areas around here and then start adding or subtracting various layers depending on what you're wanting to look, look at. Well, an outgrowth of this interactive map viewer was the maps that we provided for your city manager. We, it's been about eight years since we updated that map and a lot changed in eight years in Pinell County and our communities. So I brought a few of our large maps and a few of our small maps. And those are to you as our members of Pinell Partnership and/or for your various staff. As I mentioned, we are all over transportation and the county has asked us to help support the Half-Cent Transportation Maintenance Fund campaign. And that we are going to do. And so I've been sharing several of these flyers during these presentations, giving to the council members, giving them to the city managers for being able to have out in your for years and other areas. This is a campaign that raises money for maintenance of our roads. This is a very, very important election coming in November. These are maintaining the existing roads we have. And I understand our communities, such as Apache Junction, rely on this revenue stream. And in addition to cities, the unincorporated, unincorporated areas rely on this money stream also. So this is important for all of us. And so that election is in November and we're going to be supporting that. We do have fun in Pinell Partnership. We are, believe we're going to, if our board approves it, we're going to have Arizona Diamondbacks, the World Series contenders of last year. We're going to have a July event at their stadium. And then we're going to have a fall golf tournament at Wild Horse Pass. We intend on this golf tournament, being able to raise monies in order to support one of our local nonprofits, probably youth-based nonprofits. So we like to give back to our communities and give back into the areas we feel like there's a need. Last fall, we launched the Emerging Leaders Initiative. This is a great opportunity for the next level of leaders, maybe they're the middle managers, maybe they're, they're up and coming in their career. There's many of them sitting behind me, that there's a place for them in Pinell Partnership. And we want to nurture that, provide them with networking events and various forums in which they can decide for themselves what is interesting and what do they want to do. Right now, it's been mainly just getting to know each other, but we have a wonderful core group of about six. And, but we've had some of our networking events with 30, 40 young, well, they're emerging professionals. We don't put an age on it. But the mayor, council members, that concludes my presentation. And mayor, if it pleases you and the council, I'm available for any questions or comments you may have.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Wonderful job.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Tony.
Thank you, Tony. And we will make sure we get the maps available to staff and council. This is a little slide here of the Preserving Our Future. There's going to be an announcement here in later in March, March 26th, to have a upcoming open house. We'd now like to invite up Mary Ann Schabelski, our CEO of the Chamber of Commerce. Mary Ann, will you please come on up? Each year, we get a chance to get a report and an update from the Chamber of Commerce.
Good evening, mayor and council. Thank you for the opportunity to share an update on the Visitor Center, which we have a partnership with the city and we truly value and appreciate that partnership with you. So in July of 2019, the Arizona Office of Tourism designated the Apache Junction Area Chamber of Commerce and Visitor Center as an official Arizona Visitor Information Center. The Visitor Center is a picturesque facility and a tremendous resource to our community and an opportunity for us to showcase our extraordinary city. The Visitor Center is a one-stop resource center for statewide information and events, Pinell and Maricopa County regional information, community information and area events, local folklore and history, local business resources, and of course, we have a plethora of maps. The Visitor Center is managed and cared for by 11 amazing volunteers. I have 10 of them pictured here. We're so very grateful and fortunate for the longevity of these volunteers and their service to the Visitor Center and our community. Jim Edwards is our lead volunteer and has been with the Visitor Center for 25 years this year. And his historical knowledge and experience is absolutely priceless to the Visitor Center. And a fun fact, two of our volunteers, which are Kay Greenley and Richard Bailey, are actually winter visitors that share a couple hours each week helping out at the Visitor Center. And as you see, they come back year after year and we're very fortunate for their continued support as well as our other volunteers. The volunteers not only man the Visitor Center, keep it up to date and stocked, but they also track every visitor that comes into the center so we're able to monitor the success of the Visitor Center. And as you can see, for 2023, our total numbers include 300, or 3,611 for Arizona, 5,696 for out-of-state visitors, 1,042 for foreign visitors, for a total count of visitors of 10,349 for 2023. This next slide illustrates specifically where all of those out-of-state visitors do come from. And looking at the map, the top 10 in order of greatest number of visitors starts with number one, Minnesota, followed by Wisconsin, Iowa, Michigan, North Dakota, Illinois, South Dakota, Washington, Colorado, and Missouri. They're all leaving that cold and coming to the sunshine of Arizona. And we love it. On the flip side, Rhode Island and Washington, D.C. were the only two areas that we did not have a single visitor from in 2023. Moving on to our foreign visitors, no surprise, Canada tops the list, followed by France and Australia. And in 2023, we had 10 countries represented that came in and visited our Visitor Center. Since COVID, the Visitor Center has experienced a slow but steady increase in the total number of visitors. Looking at 2022 versus 2023, our monthly counts, you can see that in-state visitors saw an increase of 450 from 2022 to 2023. However, out-of-state visitors saw a decrease of 301 from 2022 to 2023. Our foreign visitors saw an increase of 198 from 2022 to 2023. And our total visitors did increase by 347 from 2022 to 2023. Also, in 2023, no surprise, the most visited months were January and February and the least visited months were July and August. The Visitor Center is a trusted community resource as shown in the daily tracking of incoming phone calls by our volunteers. As you can see, the majority of visitors and residents are calling in to seek local community information. And from 2022 to 2023, we saw an increase of phone calls of 1,028 calls. So when they're not coming in to visit at the center, we know that they're picking up that phone and making those phone calls and still seeking that community information, which is so important. So again, I cannot say thank you enough for the partnership that we have with the city, with the Visitor Center. And I'm open for any questions that you might have.
Questions?
Yes. Mary Ann, I would just like to thank you for all that you do. We've had the, I've had the pleasure of working with you on a number of events and you have been exceedingly cooperative and worked and helpful in working with us. And I agree with you. I am very grateful for the, for the partnership that we have with the chamber. And your leadership is extraordinary. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Yes.
I second that. I go to all your, as many events as I can get to. And they're always really well-attended and really well-put together. And you really do a lot for our city and I want to say thank you personally.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have we'd like to invite Eli Richardson for a couple of items related to current events.
Good evening, mayor and city council. Just a couple of current events we want to put on people's radar. The next two Saturdays, our Parks and Rec Department are doing activities for the kids in the community. The first one that we have here, the Itty-Bitty Olympics 2024, I believe this is just this upcoming Saturday. I saw this and it really stuck out to me. I have one daughter who's a little too young for this, but just a great chance for the kids to to come out and be active in Flatiron Park, and that's this Saturday. And then next Saturday is one of our marquee events, the Easter egg hunt. I think we're expecting like thirty-five hundred participants this year, so it's really big event. A lot of the community shows up for this, and that's not this Saturday, but the following Saturday. And lastly, this is this one's been mentioned already, so just to show you the flyer, we are doing this open house on March twenty-six to cover the discussion education on the road maintenance in Pinal County, the Road Maintenance and Improvement Fund. So really important opportunity for members of the community to be educated on this and prepared to make this decision on the upcoming vote. And lastly, we have a slide each week here, just to provide a reminder, if you haven't signed up for our weekly newsletter, it's a great way to stay involved in what's happening in Apache Junction. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Public hearings. Items fourteen and fifteen are related to the same subject. After hearing staff presentation, I will combine the public hearings, but we will have to have a motion for each item. Fourteen is a presentation, discussion, and public hearing, consideration of Resolution twenty-four dash eleven, declaring as a public record documents filed with the city clerk entitled Legal Description and Zoning Conditions for Case Number P twenty-three dash one-one-nine dash PZ. And then fifteen is a presentation, discussion, and public hearing, consideration of ordinance number fifteen forty-eight for case number P twenty-three dash one-one-nine dash PZ, a rezoning request. Who's going to be doing that? Nick, okay.
All right. Thank you for the introduction, Mayor Wilson. And also, if I may add, for your service and the service of all others, just as tonight as we celebrate that. So tonight, as was discussed last night, this case is P twenty-three one hundred nineteen dash PZ. It is Phoenix Metro Towing. I will be going over a lot of the same details for the benefit of the public today. The proposed rezoning is for these two parcels located near the northwest corner of Baseline Avenue and Tomahawk Road. The the total site is about five acres. Currently, it is zoned RSGR, the Residential General Rural Low Density Residential Zone, as well as industrial by plan development. Currently, it is that south parcel located along fronting baseline that is zoned industrial already, but it would be integrated into this new plan development in order to facilitate the development of a of a corporate office and a tow yard. The zoning map has been provided just to show the context of the area. Again, as was noted, we have the northern about four and a quarter acres that are currently zoned RSGR, while the south about three or three-quarter acres, fronting baseline, already zoned industrial. To the north, we have the Quail Run Manufactured Home Park. To the west, we have the there is a Pinal County Industrial Park as well as the Cooper's Sewer and Drain. They are located or they are zoned industrial, whether it's the county industrial zoning for the county island, which is used for zoning purposes or for storage and other industrial purposes, or the B-five zoning of the city for the Cooper Sewer and Drain Site. To the east is a about ten-acre area that is zoned B-five PD industrial, which was zoned for manufacturing facility. To the south, the parcel is state land, which is currently zoned RSGR. It is generally designated for master plan community. The exact details of what will go there is subject to later further discussion and development with a future developer. This is the general plan land use map. This site is currently designated for a commercial use. It's a little bit of an outlier with the adjacent industrial. But as it is zoned commercial instead of industrial, this rezoning would require a minor general plan amendment, which the applicant has they've identified the criteria regarding such a change within their narrative and in the staff report. Shown here is a proposed site plan and landscape plan. Of particular note, the applicant has proposed two buildings. There is first the more visible office that would be located near the south, fronting baseline, and in the rear is a future maintenance building, while further into the rear would be the actual tow impound yard. To address some of the questions that were mentioned last night, within this maintenance building, it would strictly be fleet maintenance. We've confirmed that any kind of any kind of deconstruction of a junk car would be something that would happen off-site, such as at at a recycling facility or at the material facilities involved. When it comes to the off-hours operation or anything that isn't during the main business hours, the applicant has noted that past their eight to five business hours, if there is a vehicle that comes in, it would be dropped in the in the drop yard. And then during the business hours during the day, that would then be moved further into the rear. So that way, we don't have any kind of action happening near the northern rear at night as just to make sure that any kind of noise concerns were mitigated and to make sure that they were being a good neighbor. Again, as part of this proposal, we worked with the applicant in order to provide more mature landscaping along baseline. There is a ten-foot wall around most of the perimeter of the site with the exclusion of the office building. And that is to that ten-foot wall would be to provide substantial screening for any kind of cars or trucks or anything that would be noted there. The applicant has noted that they may have some large vehicles within that yard. If they need to tow a semi, that would be something within their course of business, but we provided this ample screening and worked with the applicant to have that in order to mitigate the visual impact of that for the surrounding neighborhood. Here is the proposed elevations for the two buildings. On the left side is the the office. Since that is more visible to the street, we have worked with their architect in order to make sure we provide a high-quality architectural product that we believe would be a positive addition to the industrial area, while the building on the right would be the future fleet maintenance building. So per the the applicant has met the zoning ordinance requirements regarding public notification, and they held a neighborhood meeting on January twenty-second. We staff hasn't received any specific public comment regarding the project except at the last planning and zoning commission meeting, wherein there were some environmental concerns that were brought up, and the applicant has noted that the way they surface the tow yard as well as their drop yard should mitigate those concerns when it comes to any kind of leakage. With this, the Planning and Zoning Commission, as well as staff, support this project and voted and the Planning and Zoning Commission voted six to zero to recommend the approval of P twenty-three one hundred nineteen PZ, subject to the conditions of approval found in the staff report. With that, the applicant has also provided a presentation and is here to present. If you have any questions, I would be happy to answer them with the applicant after they provide their presentation. They'll be going into a little bit more detail, talking a little bit more about the operations themselves, and so we'll we'll address any questions that you may have thereafter.
Good evening, mayor and council. My name is Alex Hayes, twenty-five twenty-five East Arizona Biltmore Circle. Happy to be with you tonight on behalf of Phoenix Metro Towing. I do want to thank Nick and the planning staff. I think they were great to work with and, you know, their comments and feedback on the on this application, the proposed development, I think, did make it a better project, maybe perhaps a little more expensive one, but a better one nonetheless. A bit about the applicant, Phoenix Metro Towing, they, excuse me, are an established local business here, based here in Apache Junction. They've been in business for about twenty-five years and have been a reliable provider of towing and roadside services during that time period. Their core business is providing towing, transport, and impound services to private owners and also municipalities, police departments, and other local governments. And they're, you know, a well-run business, and they've experienced a lot of success, and they've been just simply outgrowing their existing facilities, which are about two-thirds of an acre and located on Apache Trail just east of Delaware Drive. And so they've been looking for a new site, new location to accommodate their expanding operations, and also their existing site is really kind of in a commercial corridor, so they've been looking for a location that would be sort of more compatible with their with their use. And that brings us to the subject site, which is a total of five gross acres, which is allows for that expanded business operations. I think they intend to almost double their employee count. And this is an area that is currently vacant, undeveloped, but it is an industrial area located about six hundred and fifty feet west of the northwest corner of Tomahawk Road and Baseline Avenue. And as you can see here, the the, you know, there's a manufactured home park to the north, but the the surrounding context of the area adjacent to the east and west is really more industrial in nature. As Nick noted, to the to the east of the site, you have industrial zoning that's currently undeveloped, but there's been some proposals for manufacturing use, but I think TBD what comes to fruition there. But to the west, they're adjacent to the site, there is a septic contractor, septic service contractor, other outdoor storage uses, equipment storage, and some other industrial uses. To the south of the site is actually Arizona State Land Department land. It's it's currently vacant, but it is, as Nick said, proposed for some other uses. To the south of that, the nearest improvement to the south is the Apache Junction landfill. To the west, you can see there is a Pinal County island there that is all zoned industrial and includes industrial uses. And the site does have this mix of zoning, currently B-five PD on the Baseline Avenue frontage, and then the bulk of it is this RSGR, which is kind of a legacy zoning district here, this location, and not likely to be developed in that, you know, per that district given the surrounding context. And then the commercial land use designation, again, as Nick noted, this is a bit of an outlier, unlikely that commercial is going to develop at this site, given the surrounding context. You know, retail is not a likely development to occur here, and a commercial office would be, you know, less likely to experience success without an accompanying industrial use like what we're proposing here today. So a bit about the project itself and the proposed development. As Nick noted, there will encompass a corporate office for Phoenix Metro Towing, and that building is about thirty feet in height and about twelve thousand square feet and would include office space, conference room, meeting space, as well as the the customer intake area. And then behind the office, you have the fleet maintenance facility, which will be used to maintain the Phoenix Metro Towing fleet. It wouldn't, you know, be working on their tow trucks. There wouldn't be any any work done on any vehicles brought to the site. And then behind that, you have the actual vehicle impound lot. There's about a hundred and seventy spaces included there. I think it was Councilmember Heck with the quick math last night. And then there is room, you know, those spaces are dimensioned for your traditional vehicle, but there is room for along the perimeter for some of the larger vehicles. Phoenix Metro Towing does receive a variety of vehicle sizes, everything from your small cars to your RVs to your large commercial vehicles. And then there would be be able to accommodate using multiple spaces or along the perimeter of the site. That that tow yard would be composed of decomposed granite to produce dust. I think there's are some plans to concrete those some of those spaces in sort of in phases. But the intake yard that the it's the drop-off and release area, which is located in the southwest area of the site, that is concrete. And we and I know there were some questions last night about general operations, and I'll do my best to kind of outline the operations of the site and hopefully answer your questions. But if you have if I leave anything out, I'm happy to answer any any additional questions you have. So typical business hours for Phoenix Metro Towing are eight to five. On Saturdays, they're open between eight to twelve. That's per their contract with the city of Apache Junction. And when vehicles are whenever a vehicle is brought to the site, it's brought to that vehicle receiving area, and then it's brought to the to the vehicle lot in the back. Now, if a vehicle is brought during after business hours after five P.M., then it'll remain in that drop-off area until after eight A.M., when it will be brought to the back. And that's done for a variety of operational reasons, but not the least of which is, you know, to accommodate the and mitigate any potential impacts for the surrounding neighbors. It is a very quiet use. There's only about one to five vehicles brought to the site per day, so it really doesn't have a ton of traffic or a lot of intensity from a use perspective. You know, there were some some questions last night about, and I think Nick touched on this, but the potential for environmental contamination from leakage. Vehicles come to this site for a variety of reasons, but certainly one of those is from collisions. But only about ten percent of those vehicles that come from collisions have leakage concerns, and most of that does occur at the site of pickup, and Phoenix Metro Towing is required to bring materials with them to clean up on-site. But if there is kind of residual leakage, it can remain in the drop-off area where it is a a concrete floor. And then, as I mentioned, there are plans to kind of provide concrete spaces in the vehicle lot should that need rise. I think there were, you know, some other questions about how long these vehicles stay on-site. Typically, for a, you know, insured vehicle, it's a matter of a couple days. People are coming to pick those vehicles up. If, for whatever reason, an owner doesn't come to collect their vehicle, Phoenix Metro Towing is actually required to initiate and abandon the proceeding on the tenth day or between ten and fifteen days of those vehicles being on-site. And that process is governed by state law and typically takes about forty-five days, after which they, you know, would acquire title and would initiate an auction process. They typically have online auction every sixty days to get rid of those vehicles. And then they're usually, you know, typically sent to, you know, other facilities for scrapping or disassembling or otherwise processing, but none of that does occur on-site here. Couple other things to note, there is a ten-foot screening and security wall located around the perimeter of the site. That is, again, to provide security, but then also screening from the adjacent uses. And then as part of the development, curb, gutter, and sidewalk would be provided along the baseline frontage. Just a couple things to note with the landscape plan, you know, there will be landscaping provided around the perimeter of the site inside the perimeter wall. Then there will be also enhanced landscaping provided. This was something that we worked with staff on, to provide more mature plantings along the Baseline Avenue frontage to provide, you know, a better streetscape and additional screening at the time of development. And then there will be a landscaped employee patio area on the on the north side of the office. Kind of quickly touch on the design of the of the buildings. I think design was an important component of of this development, and we did work with planning staff and the project architect to develop a aesthetic that is compatible with the surrounding area, but also kind of superior quality of design. The colors are sort of desert hues, and the materials, you know, there's smooth CMU with with split face CMU bands, and then additional metal paneling on the windows that provides, you know, aesthetic value, but also provides some shading for the building and cooling, especially in the summer months. Those are perforated metal that's kind of detached from the from the window. You can kind of see with the office, there's four-sided architecture, so there's design elements around the entirety of the building, and you can kind of see on the north elevation, there's the there's the employee patio. The fleet maintenance facility is to the rear of the office, and it has less public visibility, so it has, you know, fewer displays of architectural variation, but it does is compatible with the office in terms of its color and materials. Neighborhood outreach, we did host a neighborhood meeting on January twenty-second that was held at the Central Arizona College, and we noticed that neighborhood meeting in accordance with Apache Junction zoning ordinance, which actually includes an enhanced radius for industrial development. And no residents attended that meeting. We haven't heard any concerns or questions from from the community in the in the interim. So just to sum up, you know, this is a productive use of this site that enables the expansion of a local business here in Apache Junction, and it does so in a site that's context-appropriate, compatible with the surrounding uses, quality of design, landscaping, and architecture, and it really is a quiet use. and it, it really is a quiet use. So we're grateful to have planning staff support, we're grateful for the unanimous recommendation from Planning and Zoning Commission, and with no opposition. Happy to bring this forward tonight and happy to answer any questions, yeah?
I have a question.
Yes.
Going back to the, the layout, my question is, I know that you're saying there's only so many cars going back and forth, back and, you know, vehicles coming in and out, but I would imagine because you're trying, you have this, these vehicles impounded and you're keeping them secure, how much lighting is going to, because I'm pretty sure your light's going to be taller than the 10-foot fence, how much is going to be radiating out in this area overnight? Because we have these residents on the other side of that wall.
Yeah. All, all the lighting would be kind of downlit and facing in toward the site, so I, I don't think you'd experience any, any light going into that neighborhood to the north.
Okay, anyone else?
When we went over this last night, you know, I had, I had some doubts about it, I had some concerns about it, but the more I started reading all the material, this is an Apache Junction company, started and located here, growing and making it. And I'm, I'd be pleased to help them any way I possibly could.
Thank you.
Mayor? Yes?
Thank you for the update. You gave me that. I didn't get to it until I was sitting here, but you've answered my questions about dropping the cars off and getting them back there during regular business hours, not to bother the neighbors and the environmental issues that you guys are taking care of. So I'm very happy and I think it's a good project.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Don't see any other questions. All right, this is a public hearing. Does anyone wish to make a comment concerning it?
Donna Carr, Apache Junction resident. I know you talked about concrete and the fact that there's not many cars that leak. I still believe that the ground needs to be lined. I mean, we got to start somewhere to try to stop chemicals from going down into our groundwater. And I guess the other thing I just want to say is, I guess the question that Bambi asked was how tall the lights are, and that part wasn't answered. So even if you have the lights facing in, the ones on one side, if they're facing in, will still beam over in that direction.
Anyone else? Okay, I don't see any. So I'll close the public hearing and ask for a motion for the first one, which is number 24-11.
Your Honor.
Yes.
I move that resolution number 24-11, a resolution of the mayor and city council of the city of Apache Junction, Arizona, declaring as a public record that certain document filed with the city clerk entitled "Legal, Legal Descriptions and Zoning Conditions of Case Number P-23-119-PZ Authorized Under Ordinance Number 1548 Be Approved."
Second.
Moved in second, roll call.
Councilmember Cross?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Heck?
Yes.
Councilmember Soller?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schroder?
Yes.
Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay. Do I have a motion for item number 15, ordinance number 1548?
Your Honor.
Yes.
I move that ordinance number 1548 be read by title only and the reading of the entire ordinance be waived. Second.
Moved in seconded, roll call.
I apologize. Who did the second?
Bambi.
Councilmember Soller?
Yes.
Councilmember Cross?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schroder?
Yes.
Councilmember Heck?
Yes.
Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Ordinance number 1548, an ordinance of the mayor and city council of the city of Apache Junction, Arizona, approving a rezoning by plan development and minor general plan amendment as described in case P-23-119-PZ as required by Francis, oh, as requested by Francis McRecker of Phoenix Metro Towing, adopting by reference that certain document entitled "Legal Descriptions and Zoning Conditions of Case Number P-23-119-PZ Authorized Under Ordinance Number 1548, Repealing Any Conflicting Provisions and Providing For Separability."
Do I have another motion?
Your Honor. Go ahead, Bambi.
I move that ordinance number 1548, as read by the city clerk, be approved.
Second.
Moved in seconded, roll call.
Councilmember Cross?
Yes.
Sorry about that. Councilmember Soller?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schroder?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Heck?
Yes.
Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay. Presentation, discussion, public hearing, consideration of ordinance number 1546, approving a text. Okay. All right. So I guess we'll continue on. The text amendment for the Apache Junction City Code.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. Last night, we discussed a proposed text amendment to Article 1-17, Definitions for Recreational Vehicle during a work session. This public hearing tonight is to match the subcategories of recreational vehicle that was approved for the text amendment to Article 1-7, Parking, Loading, and Circulation, Circulation Regulations. With that, staff recommends approval, and also Planning and Z- Planning and Zoning Commission also recommend approval of ordinance number 1546 through case number P-23-127-AM. If you'd like me to go over the presentation from last night, I'm happy to do so, or I can answer any questions you may have.
I think we covered it.
Any questions? Anyone want to repeat?
Nope.
So I guess we're going to have to wait for a, a return before we can vote on this. But it's, it's a, a public hearing, so anyone would like to speak on this item? Come on up and talk. No? Okay. Yeah.
Mayor?
Yes.
Want to make a motion?
Oh, okay. All right. I will now close the public hearing and ask for a motion on ordinance number 1546.
Mayor?
I move that ordinance number 1546 be read by title only and the reading of the entire ordinance be waived. Second.
Moved in seconded, roll call.
Councilmember Cross? It's okay. I'll come back. Councilmember Heck?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schroder?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Soller?
Yes.
Councilmember Cross?
Yes.
Thank you. Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Ordinance number 1546, an ordinance of the mayor and city council of the city of Apache Junction, Arizona, amending Apache Junction City Code, Volume 2, Land Development Code, Chapter 1, Zoning Ordinance, by repealing and replacing a term under Article 1-17, Subsection 1-17-1, Definitions, Recreational Vehicle, repealing any conflicting provisions, providing for separability, and providing for penalties.
Mayor?
Yes.
I move that ordinance number 1546, as read by the city clerk, be approved.
Second.
Moved in seconded, roll call.
Councilmember Heck?
Yes.
Councilmember Cross?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schroder?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Soller?
Yes.
Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, no old business, new business. Presentation, discussion, consideration of Resolution Number 24-07, Continuing Benefits Program with Arizona Metropolitan Trust.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Councilmembers. Anna McCray, Human Resources Director. I am pleased to be here tonight to discuss the city's renewal with the Arizona Metropolitan Trust, otherwise known as ASMAT. ASMAT provides city employees with medical, dental life, and vision insurance, as well as an employee assistance program and a robust wellness program. The city was a founding partner with four other entities and formed ASMAT in fiscal year 2013. There, today there are nine members, consisting of both cities and towns and fire districts. Since joining the trust 12 years ago, the city's premiums have become much more stable, while the services and benefits provided by the trust have increased. Prior to joining ASMAT, the city was facing double-digit increases in its medical insurance premiums on an annual basis. In the last three fiscal years, on average, the increases to the trust in medical insurance premiums has been 3.5%. So while far less costly, these increases have also allowed the trust to build its contingency fund, to insulate itself from those unforeseen circumstances that result in high-cost claims, which can be detrimental to a health insurance program. The city has the option to renew its membership every three years. The current renewal period ends June 30th, 2024. I am here seeking your approval of Resolution Number 24-07, authorizing city of Apache Junction to renew its ASMAT membership for another three years through June 30th, 2027. Thank you. That concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
I have a question, I have a comment. Those are phenomenal numbers to have been able to hold.
They really are.
I don't know of anybody that's been anywhere close to that in savings.
It's really testament to our employees and being good health stewards, and as a goal for HR, we, we try to help our employees learn how to be those good health stewards for themselves and our dependents.
So they're very active in the wellness programs, then?
We have good activity in the wellness programs with the creation of our Organizational Development Manager this past year, who is focused on wellness, employee engagement, and training and development. We've seen those numbers increase. The trust itself has a wellness program, and we get a budget for a wellness program here in the city, so between the trust's offerings and our city through HR's offerings, we've, we've had good participation by city employees and fun events as well.
Thank you.
So, and I, I assume that there's a, an employer contribution and an employee contribution?
That is correct.
Okay, all right. What is the percentage breakdown? Can you?
So that varies between the plans, and I can certainly, and, and the subscription, whether it's employee-only, we usually cover almost complete for the employee themselves, and then percentage for the other coverages. We have employee-only, we have employee plus spouse, we have employee plus children, and we have employee plus family. Yeah.
Mayor?
Yes.
I just want to say thank you to you and the team for looking out for our employees, and that, those are really good numbers, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Do I have a motion for Resolution Number 24-07?
Mayor? I'll make the motion. I move that resolution. What was it?
Daryl, did you have something to say?
No, I'm good.
I move that Resolution Number 24-07, the resolution of the mayor and city council of the city of Apache Junction, Arizona, authorizing the renewal of the city's membership and the Arizona Metropolitan Trust Employee Benefit Program be approved.
Second.
Second.
Moved in seconded. Roll call.
Councilmember Cross?
Yes.
Councilmember Heck?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schroder?
Yes.
Councilmember Soller?
Yes.
Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Okay. Now we're doing the calls to the public. And I'd like to remind everyone that the call to the public is courtesy and not required by law. It's a time for the public to express requests, communication, comments, and suggestions. Requests to speak forms must have been completed and handed to the city clerk before the end of the city manager's report. All issues shall be presented in a professional manner without personal attacks. Under the open meeting law, council cannot engage in discussions on matters just brought forward, on, but may respond to criticism, may direct staff to follow up with the speaker directly, or place this matter on a future agenda for a council discussion. There's a three-minute time limit for each speaker. And I've got two here. Donna Carr?
Donna Carr, Apache Junction resident. Just going to say is, I guess, I keep looking at the stuff that keeps coming into AJ as far as businesses go. Maybe it's really not businesses, maybe it's like mental health places, and how many we need. I mean, do you think all of Apache Junction is crazy? I mean, so far, you already got three, and one's moving even closer. You need to look at the end result to what it's, how it's going to affect the people of Apache Junction, and not just the dollar signs for the business that's coming in and how much revenue it can give you. I know I was telling my three-year-old grandson tonight, I said, oh, I said, no, nanny's got to go. I said, I got to go to the council meeting. He says, can I go with you? I said, no, someday I'll take you. He says, because he wants to tell you that he doesn't want toilet water coming out his faucet. So, anyway, that's all I have to say tonight. Thanks.
Andre Meek?
Andre Meek, 1327, South Bel Air here in AJ. First off, thank you for the proclamation of the day for the Vietnam veterans. I wasn't able to be in that dust-up. You know, I got my draft notice in 1971, and I was classified 1H, so I was standby. And, but I saw a lot of my friends come back, saw a few not come back, and I also saw how they were treated when they came back. And really sad time for, you know, honoring our soldiers now. Nowadays, it seems like, you know, everybody's on board, pretty much. You know, they thank you for your service and everything like that, and I'm really glad to see that after everything I witnessed as a youth, young man, what happened after Vietnam. So, you know, thank you for that, and I thank them all for their service. And I was going to comment on something else, now I can't remember what it was. They're just, you guys are quiet tonight. Nothing going on. Well, I guess, oh, one thing, I'm glad to see the towing company moved down there. You know, I see where they are up on the trail there, and they're kind of impacted in their size and everything, but, you know, we got to change the name, you know? Phoenix Metro? Got to be AJ Metro. That's it.
Well, they're out there, go talk to them. Okay. Any comments from the council? If not, meetings adjourned.